Read this statement at the beginning of our meeting. The city council and staff will be following the governor's orders at this meeting, which include masks. Masks should be worn for the duration of the meeting unless you are taking a drink or cannot be heard through your mask. Your cooperation is appreciated. Follows the guidelines of the governor. The Seaside, the City of Seaside, Oregon City Council and staff apologizes as we are having technical difficulties with live streaming to YouTube and Facebook. The city needed to have repairs made to the system from our AV company, and that unfortunately has not fixed the issues of live streaming the meetings. There will be no live stream for Monday, October 11th, 2021, this meeting. The video can be watched once it is uploaded within 24 to 48 hours after the meeting, and it can be viewed at that time. City Council and staff are trying their very best to get the technical issues repaired so that the city can have live streamed videos for you to view during the meeting. Again, city council and staff apologizes for any inconvenience this may have caused. And I'll add, I know one day someone was here all day, maybe two days, three days, going through our system, and we're still working on that. So stay tuned. At this time, I'll ask Judy Ann to do the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President Wright?
Here.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Horning?
Here.
Counselor Frank?
Present.
Mayor Barber?
Here.
Counselor Montero?
Present.
Counselor Poselski?
Here.
Thank you. We have a change in our agenda. Our student representative apparently is not able to be here tonight, but I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. We have two very important proclamations this evening. The first one is the Great Oregon Shakeout, and Ann McRide is going to read that one for us. Ann, thank you.
Okay. Proclamation. Whereas the City of Seaside recognizes that no community is immune from natural hazards, whether it be earthquake, wildfire, flood, winter storms, drought, heat wave, or dam failure, and recognizes the importance of enhancing its ability to withstand natural hazards, as well as the importance of reducing human suffering, property damage, interruption of public services, and economic losses caused by these hazards. And whereas earthquake safety is a serious concern, with much of our state at risk in seismic shaking and tsunami hazards, and whereas the best way to survive a natural hazard is to develop a preparedness plan for your school, business, home, and family, and whereas being self-sufficient for two weeks after a natural disaster, as well as knowledge about what to do when disasters occur, is vital, all citizens, businesses, and governmental agencies are encouraged to participate in earthquake drills, where they practice drop, cover, and hold on during the Great Oregon Shakeout. And whereas by participating in the Great Oregon Shakeout on October 21st, 2021, at 10:21, the City of Seaside has the opportunity to join and support all Oregonians in strengthening community and regional resiliency. Now, therefore, the Mayor Jay Barber, Mayor of City of Seaside, hereby approves participating in the Great Oregon Shakeout heretofore by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the importance of preparing our city for the purposes of building a safer community and reducing the loss of lives and property from a major earthquake event by taking proactive steps today. Now, therefore, the Mayor Jay Barber, Mayor of the City of Seaside, proclaim October 21st, 2021, as the Great Oregon Shakeout Day, and encourages all Seaside schools, businesses, and citizens to practice preparedness. In witness whereof, I heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Seaside to be affixed this 11th day of October, 2021.
Thank you, Ann. You had something more you wanted to add?
I do. Couple things going on in the emergency preparedness. There is the Shakeout on the 21st. I've prepared this flyer for it. It does direct citizens on how to drop, cover, and hold on, and why that's important. We're going to put this flyer in the water bill. There's 3,500 residents that will receive that in their Seaside water bill. On the back, this year, we're going to practice a tsunami drill. We ask that after the drill is over, that you walk a route, any route. So if you're working downtown, you would take the Broadway route and get up to the hill out of the Assembly Area. And so in order to do that, this year, we've asked people to wear orange if they are going to participate in that drill. You can do it anytime on Thursday. Of course, you can do it anytime. But we're trying to get some participation, people to recognize it, why are you doing this, and encourage others to do it. So I know you want to do it. I've brought everybody a bandana. It's orange. If you wear it around your neck, you can wave it over your head, you can carry it. But I hope that you'll all join us.
Good, thank you.
As we do the walk. Let's see. Also, another activity that's happening that day, it's the ham radio network. So the OXCOM is the radio network for the county. And once a week, they have a practice, and they encourage all the ham radio operators to check in with the net a certain time, 7 o'clock on Monday night. So they call each community, and out of that community, so they're going to start with Youngs River, they're going to go to Pacific County, then to Astoria, Ham, and Warnton, all the way down to Arch Cape. And as they check in, they mark who's checked in. And the activity is just so important because it gives everybody the opportunity to use their radio. There's lots of ham operators that don't use their radio. They don't know the frequency. They don't know how to get on. They have something to say. Too late to be learning that. So that's why they have this practice activity. So they're going to have the whole network, the umbrella network, is going to work through the repeaters and let everybody check in three minutes after the drill. And our Seaside stars are going to do that as well. We have a Seaside ham radio club, and they are going to do a little bit of activity for situational awareness, because that's going to be really important. If the phones are down, the internet's down, they're the only ones that are going to be communicating, because they're working on radio waves. And so they are going to give us the information, is the bridge down? How many people are at your Assembly Area? What do you see? What do you see? Is there a fire? How much water is there? Is there, you know, are people wandering around? What's happening? So all those people are going to report up to the EOC and give the incident commander and the EOC manager the information they're going to need to evaluate what resources go where. So they're going to be the boots on the ground, and they're practicing like crazy. So they are just one of those hidden resources that we really don't know about, but they're standing ready. And then we have the Tom Horning presentation tomorrow night. Counselor Horning will be at the convention center. What a great opportunity for the SERC team. We now have 10 people on the SERC team. Steve started, Counselor Wright started it. And we've just been encouraged by the participation of these volunteers. They're just so concerned about what their neighbors are going to do in an emergency. And just really appreciate them. The convention center's been great. They've given us a great room. It starts at 6:30. 7 o'clock is the presentation. Lasts for an hour. We'll have questions and answers afterwards. And they, it's just, I just want to make it known that all these people are working behind the scenes to, because we have so many new residents, and they're just concerned about them. And they just want them to know that, they want them to know their hazards, they want them to make a plan, they want them to build a kit. They know that they can survive if they practice and get prepared.
Wonderful.
So, any questions?
Good. Thank you, Ann.
Okay.
Very good. And we'll want one of those kerchiefs, for sure. Absolutely. Thank you. Our next proclamation, read by Dana Phillips, regarding Domestic Violence Awareness Month, another very important one.
I'm sorry, I can't wear my mask. My glasses steam up. Whereas the first Domestic Violence Month was observed in October 1987, the same year that saw initiation of the first national domestic violence toll-free hotline. And in 1989, Congress designated October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas domestic violence is a pattern of assaultive, coercive behaviors, including physical, psychological, sexual, economic abuse, social isolation, and stalking that are used to maintain power and control over a person's initiative, intimate partner. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's dignity, safety, and basic human rights. And whereas domestic violence is the single largest cause of injury and homicide for women. And whereas children exposed to domestic violence experience terror, isolation, guilt, helplessness, and grief, and have a higher risk of engaging in criminal behavior and substance abuse and becoming victims of crime. And whereas domestic violence impacts the health and well-being of our community, and where it is incumbent on every citizen to play a role in preventing and ending domestic violence. Domestic Violence Awareness Month, therefore, I'm sorry, Jay Barber, Mayor of City of Seaside, proclaims the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the City of Seaside encourage all Seaside residents to join in this observation. In witness, therefore, he set his hand and caused the seal of the City of Seaside to be affixed this 11th day of October, 2021.
Thank you, Dana. Very important, two very important proclamations.
Yes.
At this time, I will open the floor for comments from the public, for anyone who would like to address the council on any item not on the agenda. Please come to this microphone, identify yourself, give us your address, and keep your comments within four minutes, please.
Hi. My name is Sue Cottington. My address, 2152 Cedar Street in Seaside. And my point tonight is simply, in this COVID time, I have had a change of schedule, and I have had the opportunity to be here most Monday evenings when you meet. And I wanted to say thank you, because I've had the opportunity to watch my government in action, and I am very grateful for the work and the dedication that you each individually bring to the table, each and every one of you. And I just want to say thank you as I return to my normal routine. I won't be here on Monday evenings. I'll try to, whatever, you know, whether things are being streamed or what have you, but I won't be able to be present, but I want to say thank you, and I will try to keep involved. And then I just want to say a public thank you to our speaker tomorrow night, Tom Horning. I want to just thank him for his dedication and is willing to speak with no charge, just out of the goodness of his heart and his dedication to safety in Seaside. And I am very grateful to be able to have him say yes to my request that he come speak before the City of Seaside and other groups that are coming in. The title of his presentation, Preparing for Tsunami: How Soon and How Big in Seaside, Oregon. I hope you'll all come and join us tomorrow night at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. It's been good to have you here. Does anyone else like to address the council? Please just come up to the mic. Thank you. Again, your name and your address, please.
My name is Colleen Brady. I'm at 315 Fifth Avenue in Canacom. And this is my first time here, so excuse me. I think I'm behind what's going on with the homeless thing. And the reason I bring this up is that I have a housekeeping vacation rental business. And I'm just concerned about where this is supposed to be going with, I'm down there by 12th and Canacom with the village that's going in there. And people that come here and spending $400, $500 a night for a room in a house, they're not going to want to come here if we're out there with homeless people. I know I'm sounding very cold-hearted, but it's called survival, and it's our beautiful little town. And I just met this gentleman, who sounds like he can answer a lot of my questions, you know, at a later time. But I just had to get up and express my concern.
Thank you.
I'm very concerned.
We share them. Thank you. Others like to speak. Please just line up. Just line up, and then you can continue.
Hi. My name's Frank Eckstein. I live at 2525 Oregon Avenue. And I am confused and need some clarity on the sewer issue. I have found out that my line has collapsed out near the main, and I'm told that I have to pay for it. It's close to the middle of the street. It's nothing, I've already spent about $700 getting it. Cameras run down it, getting it hydro flushed. They finally find this. It's about this far from the main in the middle of the street. And now I'm told that I have to pay for it, and I don't understand that.
I don't understand it either. So please, you left your, you have your name on record. We'll follow up with you on that to try to clarify that.
Okay. Okay. Because I, you know, I fought with plumbing at my house for years, and come to find out that it collapses in the street. And I just don't understand why homeowners are responsible for that portion.
Okay. We'll find out. We'll get your answer. Thank you, sir.
Hello. I'm Kathy Ryan, 465 Eighth Avenue in Seaside. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you once again. I've been here before. You know me. This past July, I came here to talk to you about banning fireworks in the City of Seaside. I spoke about the negative effects of fireworks on the environment, domesticated and wild animals, and the anxiety that five hours of constant explosions had on my Vietnam veteran husband. At the end of the meeting, Mayor Barber expressed his concern and suggested putting together a work group to look into the situation. I let you know that I was available and happy to participate in that group, but I've heard nothing further. I've done my homework and would like to mention once again some of the negative impacts of fireworks on the environment. Concentration of dust and air pollutants, chemicals such as sulfur, zinc, copper, and sodium, that starts the destruction of our environment and increases human and animal health risks. The national average during fireworks season, which as you know, goes from July 1st through August sometimes here in Seaside, the pollution rate is 42% more than on normal days. In animals, it's proven that fireworks can exacerbate existing diseases and cause other disorders. Fireworks have caused asthma in domestic animals and wild animals. Fireworks can cause temporary and permanent hearing loss for animals, which is critical for them. And when they lose any of that hearing, it's very disorienting. So you can imagine, in the wild, what that could do to some of our brothers and sister animals. And it can cause death from leftover materials that are left on the ground, and animals eat them, and it causes great problems. And foremost, fires caused by fireworks can destroy animal habitat and homes. Oh, in humans, over 20% of military personnel who have served in a war zone exhibit mild to severe PTSD, which causes intense anxiety, sleeplessness, and paranoia for days following the Fourth of July. Witnessing my husband truly suffering for the five hours of explosions is something I hope none of you have to experience or ever experience, because it was heartbreaking for me. The Fourth of July was excruciating for both my husband and myself. I am requesting that the City of Seaside, for 2022, ban the sale of fireworks within the Seaside city limits. Other Oregon cities have done that. Ben, being the most recent, I believe they put the ordinance through last week. Today, I spoke with Mark Johnston, Oregon State Fire Marshal Assistant Chief Deputy, to get some answers to questions I had. I asked about permits to sell within city limits, and he said the state fireworks statutes give authority to local government to regulate fireworks, including a ban on sales within city limits. He said ORS 480160, subsections 1 and 3, makes it clear that local city regulations can pass ordinances that they feel are necessary regarding fireworks. Grants Pass, for example, has an ordinance banning sales of fireworks within their city limits.
Kathy, you've used her four minutes. Can you sum up?
I can say that banning the sale of fireworks here in the city is not necessarily the answer, but it is a beginning. The process of approving permits for selling goes to our local fire authority, and so we can make a difference here. And I would really appreciate it if you all would get together a commission of a group, a work group, to address this problem. It really is a serious problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on any item not on the Seeing no one else move, I will close that portion of our meeting. Thank you for those good comments, and they are clearly heard, and we appreciate it. Is there any member of the council that needs to declare a potential conflict of interest on anything on the agenda?
No.
Seeing none or hearing none? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as circulated.
I saw move.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Is there, we have, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you. Now, we have a report regarding the business license ordinance review. Jeff, as you come, I want to just make a statement that this is a presentation to the council tonight to give us the information that we're needing to make decisions regarding business licenses. So there will not be council or community or citizen input. This will most likely come up on our agenda next month for action. That will be the time when citizens, homeowners, and others have an opportunity to speak to the council regarding that.
Mayor?
Yes?
Question on that. The time that it takes to make a change in the ordinance, would it still allow us time for next year's business licenses if we decided at that point to make a change? I'll throw that over to Mark.
It would depend on... All of the business... If... ...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... And they're essentially operated similar to a vacation rental, but the path to get them there with the ordinance was as similar use. We really preach the areas where vacation rentals are supported by the planning commission and the city council. And the current area is generally located, you know, west of Roosevelt, excluding the Rose Creek and Ocean Cove Estates subdivisions, and then it runs Holiday to the ocean and then west of Neowana Street. I do have a map set up on the city of Seaside that has a red line that shows you what the current area is, where it's set by policy on where vacation rentals are supported. Anything west of that is not a supported area. We look at the policy for spatial distribution. Anything over forty percent in some zones or some areas and over fifty percent in other areas is not a supported area, not a supported threshold where an application would be approved. The fifty percent area is typically the oceanfront from Beach Drive to the ocean, and I have a map for that, too, I can show you. It's dominated to the R2 and R3 zones, and since an outright permitted use in the R2 zone is as a hotel, there's no threshold in that zone that maximizes the vacation rental The commercial zones, as we talked about, for the similar use, there's no outright permitted or conditionally permitted use for a vacation rental dwelling in a commercial zone. On the east side of Holiday, there's a lot of commercial area or commercial zoning that does have single-family residential housing, and we do get phone calls on people wanting to turn those into short-term rentals, and it's outside that permitted use. Their only path would be to do a similar use, and it would have to go through a planning commission to get approval. This map shows your density requirements. The red is either commercial zone or it's not a supported area. The blue is your fifty percent. The yellow is your forty percent, and then the green is our resort residential zoning. These maps are all available publicly on the city of Seaside webpage. You can, anybody can go and take a look and see what the current policies are. Any density of the properties within a hundred feet of an applicant, if it's over twenty percent, it's required to go to the planning commission. We're seeing more and more applications go to the planning commission because we are, you know, seeing vacation rentals fill into the supported areas. There's places now in that forty percent and fifty percent area where houses are going for sale. They're calling and asking us if they would be eligible to be a vacation rental, and our answer is it's over the current density threshold. If you were to apply, most likely, the planning commission would deny your application. We're starting to see that policy, that percentage policy that was created by the planning commission and city council, take effect. It's actually affecting the availability of property for vacation rentals. And the more that fill in, the more the planning commission's going to have an opportunity to weigh in on the conditions for rentals. Our complaints this year, we had thirty-two documented complaints. Again, as we see seen last year, parking dominates our complaint. We've had thirty percent of our complaints were sustained. I'd still like to get that number down. A caveat to that is it was the majority of one house and one property management company that were kind of the driver behind having problems. You'll see it was a professionally managed property management company, so it skewed the numbers a little bit towards the professional managed companies on the amount of sustained complaints. Again, it was, I think, seven or eight complaints from one property, one property management company. We've been working to address those issues, and I think we've gotten to the bottom of it finally.
Could you tell me the difference between non-sustained and unfounded?
Unfounded means there was not enough information to substantiate the complaint, or we could not attribute the complaint to a vacation rental. Or it's a permitted reason. For, for example, if you rent a vacation rental and you have your in-laws or your parents or friends come over for dinner, they're parked on the street for a short period of time, planning commission said that that's okay, that's allowable, as long as it's reasonable. And so we would categorize that as unfounded. A not sustained complaint is you have a legitimate complaint of an issue at a vacation rental, you contact the property management company. The property management company takes sufficient action in a responsible, sufficient amount of time. Essentially, they address and deal with the complaint. I still want to document those, and I don't want to categorize it as a sustained complaint because the property management company or local contact did what they were supposed to do, what's expected of them. But if there's continued issues surrounding that property, I want to have documentation to get involved. If it's an over, if it's a parking issue, I want to be able to say, hey, we need to take a look at your parking plan, and if it's not working, we got to do something else or we got to lower occupancies. I want to work with the property management companies to be able to say, these are the complaints we've had, this is the documentation that showed that these were valid complaints. We got to fix this. It's the part of our ordinance where I get to go in and try to help mediate between the neighborhood and the affected neighbors and the vacation rental. That documentation is really important to me. It really helps make my case when I get the, it's just complaining, people complaining about vacation rentals. I'd say, well, we have actual documentation, photographs. Historically, this is becoming a problem. It's just another hammer for me to be able to work with these things.
So then would that lead me correctly to understand that a substantiated would be one that has been found to be a valid complaint but was not handled?
That's correct. The expectation of our planning commission is that the property management company or the local contact take action on the complaint within two hours. That doesn't necessarily mean they have to solve the complaint, but they need to acknowledge that there's a complaint and take action on it. I don't necessarily expect them to go out to address a parking situation at two o'clock in the morning unless it's a massive house party or something of more significant nature where the police should probably get involved. But the expectation would be first thing in the morning, they address it. I would look at that as a reasonable solution to a problem, is addressing it at the most reasonable period of timeframe. If there's no action taken at all, or they take very little action, that's where we get the sustained complaints. That's where I get to tell the property management company or the local contact, we're not, we're not, we're not following through here. We've got to do something about this. We can't just let complaints get called in and no action be taken. There's an expectation that some action get taken on a complaint, especially if it's a substantiated complaint.
One thing that I know you've done, and I think you are the one that really pushed it, was to go towards making sure the local person is an actual local person and will follow through and knows that they're the local person. Does this show that that's really working well?
I believe so, and with the planning commission's approval, we allowed a preferred contact to also be listed. So the local contact is still a requirement. They have to live and reside within Platteville County. The preferred contact could be the owner of the vacation rental. That gives an opportunity for two phone numbers to be listed, which now the person reporting the complaint can get ahold of either the owner of the house or the local contact. And I think that's gone a long way to addressing complaints as well. Making sure that information is accessible is what's really, I guess, what's kind of frustrated me in this summer was I would hear from residents all the time, well, I didn't know you could, you could get that information. So I want to push it out there as much as possible. Tell your constituents if they have a problem with a vacation rental, look up the local contact, call our office, get the local contact information. We want it to be as accessible as possible. They can go to the city's webpage. The old website was a little clunkier, a little harder to get this information out there. The new website's running a lot smoother. Fill out a quick web form. It sends you a link to a map. The map link never changes. If you save that link on your phone, wherever, that link never changes. The information on that map is constantly updated live by me. As we get new vacation rentals, as local contacts change, that map changes. It's, it's a lot more than just a list anymore. It's an actual interactive map that you can zoom in on if you're curious what's around you in your own neighborhood. You can zoom in on this.
It looks like it didn't.
Oh, it didn't come through for us? Unfortunately, it's not going to, the technology piece, right? It's not going to, it's not going to work for us tonight. It's something that you can, as the council goes through, and download that map yourselves and take a look at it. Let me get back to my... It's, I wish I could show you because I have it set up to where it shows, this isn't the live one, but this is a screenshot of it. It's coded with a key and a legend on the side when you do open up the map. It'll show you what each individual rental it is, what type it is. Is it a transient rental condo? Is it a vacation rental dwelling? It distinguishes between what's active and what's a pending application that's still going through. I think we have about twenty-five or twenty-six vacation rental dwellings that are pending right now. They haven't completed, they've completed the land use approval, they haven't completed the inspection approval, so they're still working towards getting stuff like that completed.
So to get to that map, do I have to complete one of these complaint forms?
Not the complaint form. There's a, there's a quick web form for the...
The contact.
Yeah.
That's a request for contacting.
It asks for your name. The planning commission asked, when I brought this to them, that I capture some information. So it asks for your name, address, phone number, and an email address. The email address has to be valid because that's what address the link gets sent to. And this is all subject to change, too. If the planning commission or the city council wants, I can make the map just there with no form necessary.
Jeff, just to clarify, the council is free to ask questions. We're wanting to be informed about your report. It was just that the audience, the citizens are not invited to make comments or ask questions tonight. They will be able to do that when we meet in November.
Sure.
Just to clarify.
I really appreciate the questions. Like I said, I want this information out there. I want people to know how to access this information or get ahold of me. Our records management system, our program that actually roots out vacation rental advertisements, the thing runs great. I love having it. I'm in it multiple times a day. The way we've set it up is to hold all of our records for vacation rentals. The conditions of use, the application, the original application, any change of contact information, anything that's in that file, we've scanned in and put in the system. This allows me to, if I have a concerned neighbor, well, what are the rules for this vacation rental next door? I can send them the conditions of use. It's all public record. We'll send it to them in a PDF. They can read it and see this vacation rental has specific conditions that were set in order for them to operate. Having that without having to go dig through files and scan it in has just been a lifesaver. There was a, there is a renewal process in the business license section of this applica, or the computer program we're running with MuniRev. We used it last year during our business license renewals. I was able to capture about three hundred and fifty email addresses for owners of vacation rentals. So that gives me now a mailing list to send out.
Wonderful.
I've used that list about quarterly every other, every month in the summer to send out information, what's going on in Seaside, what events are we having. And it's also, these are common compliance issues. Can we work together as a group to solve these? Did you know the garbage service for fifteen dollars will put a wind latch on your trash can to keep it from blowing down the street? Please don't make your neighbors pick up your garbage. Just little things like that. This meeting, I, when the agenda was set early last week, I sent out an email saying, hey, just so you know, there's going to be a discussion on vacation rentals in front of city council. Here's the web form if you'd like to submit a public comment. Feel free. It's very handy. It's been received very well by the owners. I get a lot of thank-yous for it because they feel like they're now involved in what we're doing here in Seaside, and it's a good way for me to, you know, send out quick reminders, hey, Hood to Coasts this weekend, or hey, soccer in the sands this weekend, be mindful of parking. You know, big weekends we have here, we can send out updates and information to them. And like I said, I, every email I send out, I try to send out what a common compliance issue is and a possible solution to it. One, it gives knowledge, it gets knowledge out there. Two, I get a lot of responses back from owners saying, hey, I had this problem, this is what I'm doing to fix it. Which now gives me ideas on how to advise other owners that might be having that problem. It's a way to work with our ownership groups to try to solve these compliance issues, to make their, I tell them all, my goal is for the vacation rental that's in the neighborhood to not have any impact whatsoever. The neighbors shouldn't know that it's a vacation rental. It should just be a normal beach house. There shouldn't be any, should not be any increase in traffic or any negative impact at all. We still have the annual and five-year inspections. Where about two hundred and thirty-one of our short-term rentals require them. The other ones, the permits are old where there's no requirement for an inspection in the conditions of use. As the policies change, so does the generation of permit and conditions. What started as not having really any conditions whatsoever back in nineteen ninety-two is there's about twenty standard conditions now, plus any additional conditions that are put by the planning commission or the planning director based on the uniqueness of the property. These inspections, we have a backlog of ninety-six that need to be done. With the COVID levels going up and down, they've been suspended. I'm really hoping we can knock these, at least get the backlog out of the way by spring break. It's a wait and see what happens with the COVID case levels and if we get down to fewer restrictions and feel it's a good idea to get into people's houses.
I have a question on these, Jeff. Do you personally do those, or do we involve the fire department, or who is that?
I've been talking with, with the fire marshal to see to what extent the fire department wants to be involved, and we have had some ongoing conversations where there may be some fire-specific things that we'll implement into the inspections. Right now, it's just me doing that.
So with that kind of a backlog, is it feasible that you would get it caught up, or do you need help, or?
I think I can get it caught up in the winter. We have, it slows down. A lot of these are, around sixty percent are professionally managed vacation rentals with property managers. When I started doing some of the inspections before the COVID levels increased, it was literally the cost of seaside vacation homes, here's your houses that need inspections. Can we get a day where we just, we go house to house to house? The inspection takes about thirty minutes. We're checking fire extinguishers, we're checking fire escapes, egress windows, we're checking smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms. We're looking at parking to make sure that their parking is what was in their conditions of use, and we're checking the required postings to make sure they're there. So that, it's a minimal inspection. We're not going as deep as we do when we get a new application or even a renewal or a change of owner to a new application. We do a much more in-depth inspection there. So like I said, I'm hoping by spring break, we can get a good number of these down. And I will, I will throw out there because I do get complaints from guests that stay at vacation rentals, it provides me with a safety issue, that's an immediate, we need to come in and inspect your vacation rental. And we get those, we do get those periodically that, hey, there's a, there's a problem with this vacation rental. We'll get ahold of the owner and the property manager, say we need to go in and inspect that as soon as possible.
Good.
That's what I got for you tonight. I'm more than happy to take any questions if you guys have any additional...
Any other questions?
You know, we really labored over the decision to bring a person like you on as a compliance officer. And I think your statistics here show that having the compliance officer in place has really made vacation rental management much more doable, not only for the management companies and the owners, but especially for people in the neighborhoods. And that's been a very positive step forward.
I think it also gave the planning commission teeth...
Yes.
...when there are ongoing issues with certain properties, to be able to have the background to be able to make decisions regarding those licenses.
Have the data. Yeah, you bet, you bet. Well, one of the, one of the big questions was how are we doing financially? And I know, Mark, you've done a little work on that. Stay there, Jeff, there may be more questions. Talk to us a little bit about how the increase in the rate and how that has come across in terms of our costs.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the, first of all, let me give Jeff some credit because he's, he's pretty thrifty. He doesn't, hasn't spent a whole lot of money, and that's, that's to his credit. He's done a great deal of work and hasn't cost the city a great deal. But you did raise business license fees for vacation rental dwellings, and some people felt that you raised them a little bit too high. But right now, that increase, we took a look at it, and it's running at about a hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred is about what it's generating as far as the increase is concerned. We showed you the costs associated with hiring a compliance officer and the other payroll expenses that are involved. We're showing you that there's about forty-six hundred dollars in materials and services that we can apply to the compliance officer, and also the software program, the cost of the software program that Jeff talked about that has been very useful. As the council is well aware, we do charge a nine percent administrative fee to all the different funds, and so we went ahead and itemized that out for costs associated with a compliance officer. And you'll notice that last year, that resulted in about thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars extra that was left over. For this coming year, we believe that it's going to be closer to twenty-nine thousand just because of the increase in costs associated with that. And you're going to continue to see that happen over time. But if the council was interested in reducing the business license fee for vacation rental dwellings, to bring it to what would be pretty close to even, you could reduce it as low or as much as fifteen percent, which is about seventy-five dollars a license. But I would make sure that the council is aware that in the next two or three years, you'll probably be looking at coming back and having to gradually increase that license again, just because of the increased costs that are associated with running the compliance office. So that's about where you are right now, and that's about as close as information as we could get for you today. But that would be strictly up to the council as to whether you wanted to make adjustments in that or not.
I have a question.
Sure.
I know that in doing this job, the compliance officer has to travel around the city a lot.
Yes.
And I don't know where the car that he uses comes from, but I would anticipate that sometime in the future, we're going to have to replace that.
Well, we kind of, now I, Jeff can correct me if I'm incorrect here, but normally what we do with cars is, especially for people like compliance officers and building officials and people like that, is we try to move cars from one department to another as they age out in the primary department. So my guess is, Jeff, that that's probably what you're driving is maybe like an old police car or something.
You driving the Mac?
Which, which can be a lot of fun, and, but that's kind of the way we normally go about doing that. So actually going out and buying a vehicle would probably not be something that we would do. There undoubtedly, though, counselor, will be some costs that we'll need to incur over the years. uh, over the years that.
Well, if it's the, if it's the leftover vehicle after you've gotten a new vehicle for the police department, it's going to have some high repairs.
Well, and those are things that have to get taken care of. Right now, uh, they're buried in that $4,600 of materials and services, but one of these days it may be a bigger bill. Uh, and those are things that we have to take into account. Yeah, I would, um, having some reserves, uh, certainly are, are appropriate for any department and, and any function that are going to take place. Um, I'm just pointing out to the council that yes, there has been some excess. It's not a great deal. Uh, but, but there certainly has been some excess as of right now. Um, normally when we look at costs, we usually, um, are looking at them maybe over a five or seven-year period because like I said, they will vary. Uh, and, um, and usually the costs increase over time. I'd love to tell you they're going to decrease over time, but that seldom happens.
I, I have a question.
Sure.
Do you, are there any tools or, um, expenses that you foresee in order to be able to do your job more efficiently that would, that you would like to add to what you're doing or anything like that? Nothing, the, nothing I can foresee would be significant. Uh, building code books are always great. I like to have those, uh, around. So when I, I, I tell an applicant that, hey, we've got to really fix your stairs because this is going to be a problem. I can point to a reason, uh, that it's not in the residential specialty code. So it's, it's nice to have documentation like that, but, um, like, uh, Mr. Winston Lee said, I, I'm driving an old police car. It's perfect for what I'm doing. It's, uh, you know, reminds me of my previous professional a little bit, so. I'm more than, and it, and it fits me, which I, I love even more, right? Thank you.
Well, I think our next step is to put this on the agenda for, uh, next month to consider whether or not we're going to leave this rate at that level, reduce it or increase it. There's another thought and Mark, I'll, I'll just kind of give notice on this. The council, I, I know a number have talked about this, that we've not addressed in general bills, business licenses uh, in the city of Seaside for many, many years.
Uh, yes, you have not made changes in, uh, several years.
It may be time for us to do an omnibus review of those. I know, uh, one of the communications that we, we received is why only vacation rental licenses? Why aren't we looking at all business licenses? And I think that's a good suggestion for us to do that. So fair warning, we'll be coming back to you for that as well, but I think it applies to David's question and timing on that is a.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me ask, uh, if you were to look at the ordinance uh, in its entirety, would you want to do that in a council meeting setting or would you rather do that in a workshop setting?
Workshop.
No, I think in a workshop that would be good.
So do you want to try to schedule, uh, a workshop, uh, at this point?
I'd actually be okay with us addressing the vacation rental numbers now and push this, push the rest of the license fees into the beginning of next year.
Okay.
I, I think that's the crucial issue right now. And I know we have a workshop scheduled for the first, uh, and Tita will talk about that a little later in November, so. Let's, let's hold that.
Okay.
But, uh, maybe you can start to do some background work on that, uh, because I know it's a big, big issue with the other licenses.
We certainly can.
Yeah. Jeff, thank you so much for your good report and for the good work that you're doing.
Thank you very much. You're doing great.
I hear all over the community, uh, the positive responses that people are getting and my telephone rings a lot less from citizens saying, what is going on and et cetera, et cetera. So we appreciate that as well.
Please continue to push my information out there and, and my contact information, the website, city's website's got a lot of information on it. The more of our residents that know what we're doing, I think the, the better we can make it.
Is there a way that, um, the, when you send out emails to the vacation rental owners, that your quarterly messages or your reminders and all that, that you can put us on your mailing list? I don't know if the rest of the councillors want that, but I sure would like to see what the, what the VRD owners are getting.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll include, uh, you guys on there.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Jeff.
Moving on then, we have a public hearing regarding ordinance 202104. This is regarding an annexation. Mark, are you wanting to talk to us about that or I don't see Kevin here tonight, so.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you have a request by a property owner who'd like to be annexed into the city of Seaside. Uh, this is a piece of property that's up in the northern part of, uh, Wana, up by, uh, North Coast Family Fellowship. You know, you have a subdivision that's being built up in that area. Uh, and this piece of property that's adjacent to that, uh, development that's taking place there. Um, I don't know if the property owner is here tonight, but if you'd like to invite, uh, property owner up to speak on it, that'd be appropriate.
You want to come up, sir, and identify yourself and tell us about your, your, uh, request? Then we have a public hearing after that. Yeah.
My name's Randy Stemper. I'm at PO Box 1417, Astoria. Um, we've requested the annexation into the city because there's a new sewer line there. We're building a new residence there and we'd like to tie into that sewer line. And from my understanding by the rules, if it's not annexed, we cannot use the city service.
That's correct.
And if I can answer any questions for you, I'll try.
Good. Well, uh, right now I think what we'll do, Randy, is, uh, open the floor to a public hearing to see if there's anyone here that has any concerns about that. Um, I'll, at this point, please just stay there in case there might be some questions. Uh, I'll open the floor and declare a public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak regarding ordinance 202104? Anyone? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing. Uh, council, do you have any questions? Comments?
No.
You know, it's rather unusual. Usually annexations are adversarial. This is you coming to us saying, we would like to come into the city of Seaside and we are glad to welcome you into the city of Seaside. So at this point then I'll entertain a motion for first reading by title only.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same?
Ordinance 2021 dash 04, the city Seaside Oregon annexing a certain territory east of the city property located on vacant land, Wana Road.
Okay. There are two more readings and we'll make it, uh, there'll be, uh, two more and then that will become an ordinance approved.
Do you like me to come back for those?
Uh, it's not necessary unless you'd like to. Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
It'll be pretty routine, I think. Okay. Thank you. Uh, we have a number of vacancies on our boards, committees and commissions. So get the word out. We have an opening on the city tree board, on the airport advisory committee, the parks advisory committee, the convention center commission and the transportation advisory commission. These are important parts of the working machinery of the city government. We need people volunteering. So if you would like to volunteer, if you know somebody that would like to volunteer, they can get an application from Kim in the city hall and, uh, we will gladly consider your application.
We do have one application for the, uh, it's kind of worded oddly, but among the things she listed was convention center commission.
I didn't see that. Uh, who was that?
At least Morrison. I'm not sure. It's probably Alice or something like that. Morrison.
Like Alice Morrison.
So, um, we could nominate her now and set up an interview at some time in the future.
Leave it open.
I believe it's Alicia.
Alicia. Okay.
Okay, uh, that person is nominated. Um, is that a motion to nominate and is there a second?
Sure, second.
Uh, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Um, let's schedule, uh, an interview perhaps, uh, before our next meeting.
But we're leaving that open.
Yeah, and that will be let, yes.
Well, and there's, yeah, there's two openings anyway, so.
So.
Do you want to schedule a single interview or leave it open for a while and then have multiple interviews all in the same evening?
Good suggestion. Uh, yeah, so we'll, uh, leave it open and, uh, let her know that we'll be following up with her on that.
Yeah, we all go beat the bushes.
Good, yes. New business. We have a request from, uh, the city of Seaside Main Line Raw Water, uh, water hookup. Um, I, are the Pogues here? Yes, please, please come on up. I know you, uh, wanting to, you can sit here at this table if you'd like. As, uh, we have struggled with your request, as you know.
I'm sure you have.
And, uh, we'd love to be able to do it, but the state is telling us something different. So talk to us about, uh, how we can help you.
Have we resolved the problem?
Yeah.
Well, first off is we thank you for even considering this. And, um, I'd just like to say that, uh, you don't ever want to be without water. We've, uh, we've gone through a short period, the last three and a half months. First month, well, we, we went dry. Forty-year well went dry. Come to find out Oregon's been in a drought for three years. Didn't know that, but found that out. And it looks like we may be the tip of the spear here to some degree.
But Clatsop County is not considered one of the counties.
Yeah, they won't, they haven't designated that as of yet. Anyway, for the first month and a half, we, uh, we collected water from Gearhart and Seaside in five-gallon buckets to flush the toilets and to do some moderate water use with. Uh, we took our showers in town because we have commercial buildings here that have showers, so we did that. And of course, um, we, we basically haven't had any service out here at all, but we, uh, we went ahead and made application with a, uh, with Alpine, uh, drilling company to come and drill a well. They did come. Uh, it took them, it took them about a month to get there, but they did come. And because of the layout of our property, I don't know if you guys have a picture of our property on site on, in the pack. I think they do.
Yeah, they do, but I didn't notice. I didn't put in all of the easements and stuff that are in there.
Well, we're, it's kind of interesting. We have, uh, we have five acres, but
Close to five.
Most of it's down, uh, by the Nechadicum River. It's kind of down in, it's in the lowlands. Uh, but on the higher, higher portion of the property, we have, uh, we have the power lines to the east that Seaside serves off of.
The main transmission.
The main transmission, yeah, transmission. So we, we can't, we have to stay away from that according to the U N M. And, uh, the, even though they utilize it as an easement. Uh, we also have our houses, because it, uh, with the parking, with the parking, everything is, is an obstruction. And then we have the river for which we have to stay a certain portion away. And then we have, uh, the city water line that you guys drink off of runs right down the middle of our property. And then we have Highway 26 to the south, Mail Creek to the, to the west. So we had this little tiny portion we could drill in.
But we also have to stay so far away from our septic tank and our drain, and our drain fields. So we're talking a lot of property that limits us as to where we can actually drill.
But we did contract to get a well drilled. We didn't, we didn't fail on that. Problem is they went down to about 204 feet and they found a gallon per minute of saltwater. So we were, uh, that was just a loss for us. So it was kind of, kind of discouraging.
At a cost of $12,000 for nothing.
So our next option was to take a look at Mail Creek, which we actually pumped out for the first year and a half that we had, um, uh, actually our home built. And of course, to get financing, you have to have a permanent source of water. And so we at that time had the well drilled, which was successful, lasted 40 years. But it was pretty much disrupted. We started having problems with it after they put, put the Mail Creek Bridge in because they were out there jackhammering. We're like, I don't know, within 500 feet of that bridge and they were just beating the tar out of our house. Our house settled, all that stuff. Nevertheless, we didn't, we just lived with it. And we did correct some of the things and we did put in this last year a brand-new water system. Costs us over $5,000. It includes a UV system, which is actually better than what you guys have. So I just want to point that out. And so we talked to the people that installed it and they said, uh, your system is as good as anything in the state. So I can, I can at least test it. Now you can certainly talk to them, but they have a quote, we have a quote from there. Anyway, uh, we're stuck, really. We don't have a water source. The state has indicated they may give us, uh, a permission at a Mail Creek. But if we do, then I have to get permission for fish and wildlife and I also have to get permission for, for, uh, from the state divisional lands, state divisional lands. Because there's, because of the way the creek runs, I don't know if you've ever been out on Mail Creek. It, it, it floods during the winter and it goes down to something about this width during the, um, summer.
And, and also in their thing, they said the limited license does not provide a secure source of water. Water can be revoked at any time. Such revocation may be prompted by field regulatory, regulatory activities or many other reasons.
And the permission is for two years max.
Find a permanent source.
So we have to find a permanent source. So we thought, hey, you know, we have a line, a 24-inch line running right through our property here. And since we are part of the community, because we are the last house on your fire district. We are the last one on the east. And there are properties, uh, that are on the water system that has actually been upgraded and it's clean. It's, it's been treated through your process. And it's about 1,700 feet away. But, uh, there, the indication is that the city's not at this point in a position to extend it to us, which would be to the east 1,700 feet. Although there's other, there's, there's three, four other property owners between us. Is that right? Or three?
Yeah, there would be. Well, of course, we're the last one. Um, um, you've got Dundas Siz, you've got, um, Redding, which I don't know if you guys know that it was the Aaron Riley.
I think part of the problem is the line that reaches where you're talking about is only a one-inch line. The whole thing would have to be upgraded to come out.
And they, and, and that's correct. There's, there's not, there's no dispute on that. I think in the, there, there was a dispute on, they, the city had a consultant come back and they made a mistake on four, I think it's four or five, I can't remember. But it says that it's 1,700 feet. They're, they were responding, they were thinking the raw water was going to be run 1,700 feet. All we have to do is go down four feet to your water line, tap the bottom and the water would be, uh, it would come, it comes from, the source of the water that you guys get is about a mile and a half from us.
Well, no, it's not even that far. It's across the street. The watershed's actually, I think I showed you the picture. If you've got, did you get our whole packet?
Yes.
Because see, if you look right here, this is your watershed right here. Well, our property is right here. And your water line actually comes across and into Crown Property, but then we, we also own this and it comes totally, it just splits our property. It's not on the side of our property. It's right down the middle of our driveway. So.
If you wanted to look at the pipe, I could dig four feet. You can drive right on our drive and never get out of your car, you can see it. So.
Now, the pipe you're talking about is the raw water pipe or the finished water pipe? No, the raw water. Okay.
Yeah, and listen, we'd love to have your treated water and quite frankly, we would, it's like gold to us. But it's not likely that's going to happen because the city just isn't in a position to extend the pipe out at that time. We totally understand that.
When I called Mark at the beginning, he said it'd probably be at least 10 years out before you redo the system.
But folks, the raw water is served to over what, 1,300 communities in the state of Oregon.
Well, I did a lot of investigation. Yeah, and I found a lot of sources that, including, you know, I don't, I think I told you some of them in my stuff, if you guys read through that. There are a lot of raw water sources out there. And there's also, um, um, the, um, lawsuit with the city of Scappus where they still provide raw water to those residents out in that one area.
But that's not the biggest, the biggest issue is we're willing to sign, uh, an, a liability waiver with you. So you would not have any liability at all. And we've checked with several different attorneys and that happens all the time. So as far as us getting dirty water, I don't think that's good. I mean, we may be getting turbidity, but we'll have a huge, we have a 5,000-gallon tank going to be here in December. The other argument was, well, they might not be able to, to supply us water all the time. We're going to have a 5,000-gallon tank plus another thousand. I already had, I've already got, I've had to be hauling from your Public Works 500 gallons at a time out to my house to pump into that thousand gallons. So that would get us 40 days without any, if they had to shut down the pipe. And then after that, if they were still down, I guess I go back to Public Works with my tank, my trailer and my tanks and get water. But right now it's, it's absolutely making our life miserable because I have, I mean, I spend at least, uh, it, the tanks, we have a thousand-gallon tank now. It's about 150 gallons a day we use in the house. I think that's pretty normal too. So you can see I'd be about three to four days I have to go fill up the tanks, bring it back, pump it in.
Yeah, and we have to go buy a trailer. We've had to buy the.
We, we've spent, we've spent over thirty thousand dollars already, just trying to have.
In a perfect world, what would you like the city to do?
I'd like the city to, to give us the opportunity. I mean, they'll, they'll set the meter there. They just have to tap underneath it. It's, they said, the, one of the arguments was, my wife used to work for Water District, which we're pretty familiar with the process, that there were times when the water's low. Well, if you tap it from the bottom, which happens all the time, we'd never, unless the water runs dry. If it runs dry, you're dry. So we should be able to get water. And then when we'll do is, what we'll do is, we'll go ahead and with the meter on there, we'll fill the tank up and be five thousand gallons ahead of everybody else before it goes back. If, if Dale's to call me up and say, look, Brian, we've got to shut it down because we're thinking about lining it. Fine, we just, we'll just fill up all our tanks and wait it out. So it's really a matter of, you know, I, I know that there's some concern to the city isn't, the other concern is Dale made was, is well, you know, we have, there's a lot of people and, and we can't promise water to everybody. The problem is, you already promised it to us because first off is, we go to the water, we go down to the, and have to pump it. But even if you told us no on that, we have four water accounts here in town. We'll just have to go there and fill our tanks and bring them out to the house. So it's just kind of like, wouldn't you rather just make money that way and not have to treat the water we have? Wouldn't that be the same money? City makes the same money, but they don't have to treat it. So I, I can't emphasize enough about the water cleanliness. We had, we've had, the water we had was horrible, even before, when we had the well. But there are systems out there now that, that these people put in, that it, it comes just, we, like I said, we have a UV system. You don't have that. Ours is, as soon as it passes through that, everything that's potentially deadly is dead. And, and of course, then we have like three or four filters in between that. And then if we put the five thousand gallon tank in, there'll be another three filters. One of the arguments was, that I noticed in here was that what's going to happen if the meter gets clogged up? Well, if the meter gets plugged up, then I guess you come out and you guys unplug it and you send us a bill. But I doubt that will ever happen. But that's one of the arguments.
And, and I think I also quoted, you know, in there, because, because the right of ways, there's, there were two right of ways. One piece, one piece that we had was through Crown Cellarback Property way back in whatever. And the other one was from Olaf King. Because we have two actually tax lots out there. And so both of those say that it was for, to supply your water in future to the city of Seaside, its inhabitants and adjoining communities. So, and that is, that is noted in the right of way that where your line goes across our property.
That, I would have, and I would have to say that we're part of the community because otherwise we wouldn't be in the fire district. And there wouldn't be water seventeen hundred feet away to our neighbors. So, so I mean, I would have to say that we.
And you got to mention, our house is eight miles out of the city limits. We're out at milepost four on high, or just right by milepost four on Highway twenty six.
And less than a quarter of a mile to your freshwater, which we'd love to have, but.
Okay, let us, let us ask some questions of our management.
I feel a little tired. I was hauling water today, that's why.
That's all right.
A little weird.
Thank you. We, we hear you, we hear your pain. But none of us are water engineers.
Oh, I know, sure.
Understand that. Mark, I'm going to throw it to you and to Dan Thiel, our city attorney, to make any comments that would be helpful to the council.
Well, I'm going to give it to Dan because Mayor, like you, I'm no water expert either. I take advice from the Public Works Department and from Mr. Van Thiel concerning legal issues. So, so I'm going to punt it over to Dan and let him go ahead and, and talk to you about, if you will, more of the legal side of this.
I have, I've received communications, I think they're in your packet, between my office and Dale. And I've known this couple for years. I used to provide legal services to them until they wised up and sent out one of their sons to law school. So I haven't seen them for years. But this is a fine couple and they're good citizens of this city. I've also spoken at length with, with Peggy. The other day she called me and she was aware of my reaction to Dale's memorandum, to me and the concerns that the, the city has. My focus was on really just two areas. The city is a, is a public water system. And you'll see an email here to you from the state of Oregon, because that was one issue that I had, is that because we're a public water system, we have to supply potable quality water. That, that's a given. I can't, I, I would never tell you to do something that, that potentially would jeopardize the, the system that the city has in place. When I spoke with Peggy, I asked her whether or not she had checked to see whether or not, because I didn't know, had the city ever provided raw water to anyone. And the advice that I've received is, the city has never done so. And so we're permitted distributor of water. We have to meet certain requirements. I'm concerned that if we were to help this couple, and indeed, I think they're a fine couple and they're good citizens of this city and deserve all the consideration that you could show them. I cannot tell you to do things that would jeopardize the permitting process that this city has gone through to be able to publicly distribute and, and maintain a public water system. I don't know anything about raw water. The second issue that I have, aside from the permitting issue, is the issue of liability. That's what I always look at on behalf of this city, is the potential risk and the liability that we might be exposed if we provide raw water. In speaking with Peggy, Peggy says, Dan, Brian and I will sign a waiver of liability. That only goes so far in this lawyer's mind. This is a couple that will have people that will come into their home, that will potentially consume this water. They could waive their liability potentially if they got sick or whatever happens to you if you drink raw water or consume it and it's in some way polluted. They can't waive anybody else's potentially liability that may be created that would consume water in their home through the use of raw water, even though they have the best of intentions. I can't have those people going after this city and potentially creating a risk for those individuals. They could waive their liability. One of you may be a visitor in their, in their home and consume raw water there and become sick or whatever happens to you in that situation. You, you'd have a perfectly valid right. And I would suggest to you a lawsuit with a good deal of merit that could be brought against the city of Seaside. Because of, we're one in violation potentially of the permitting process that we're a public water system. And secondly, you've got a legitimate right against us because they can't waive the liability for you or anyone else that would be on the premises that might consume that water. It's for those reasons. I'm sure that you get tired listening to me worry about and focusing on risk, but that's what I have to do. Risk and liability. And I can't tell you what the outcome would be, other than it doesn't feel very good to me.
Can I address something? Um, one of the things that, that Dale asked me was to find other systems that provided raw water. And I think I've listed a lot of them in my, in my stuff that I've told you. And one of the quotes in that Oregon, that Oregon thing was from Carrie Salas, who's part of the drinking water, and they're the overseers of the drinking water in Oregon. And she states it in that, well, they quoted her as stating that there's only thirteen, there's thirteen hundred water systems in Oregon that provide raw water. And it was funny because I went to go pay a water bill with this, with this, in Sun River, as I said, and Sun River's water's not treated. Madras is not treated, Culver, Metolius. And then there's also a lawsuit against the city of Scappus, which, Dan, I can give you, I have the whole packet here, or a lot of it, the information. But it's, they were
Boyden and I.
Ordered to provide raw water to that one area, which is out in their rural community. And is also, you know, so on, so forth, not within their city limits and so on, so forth. And I'd be happy to give, you know, what information I have. But I didn't think as a packet, you guys would want to look at all those pages. So anyway, I'd be happy that there is a precedent where they were required by court to do that to those communities or those particular houses. And, you know, if you want to review that information, I would be happy to, you know, to at least have you guys think about it and review it, so.
I've always loved to look at, I, I love to look at court cases, but I, I don't know anything about that case. I can assure you of that. When I spoke to Peggy, she asked me, should she put together a lot of material? I said, Peggy, this council can't help you if it's, if it's persuaded to do so unless you provide it with all the information that you think is pertinent and relevant to this particular case. I, I don't know anything about the Scappus case. I don't know whether it went to the Oregon State Supreme Court. If it's merely a trial court case, that's not a precedent for anything. Trial court cases are not.
So, Dan, could I ask you a couple of questions? As I look at this sort of into the future. You're talking about them being able to waive their rights, but nobody else's rights. As I understand it, taking the raw water means tapping into the one pipe that comes to Seaside. And I think it was even mentioned here tonight that sometimes that pipe gets so low that if they were tapping into the pipe, they would actually be, be denying the city of Seaside an adequate amount of water. Now, I think Brian addressed that by saying they would be willing to, you know, if, if Dale said, you need to turn it off, they turn it off. But that's only an agreement that the city might have with these property owners. Would that agreement withstand the sale of the property? That kind of thing. So that's one thing I think about. The other thing I think about is, does this set precedent for people who are further up the line then to claim rights to tap into our raw water system?
Peter, in answer to the last question, I'm always concerned about precedent because if we've never done what this family is asking us to do and we do it, then what would be the criteria or the rationale for us then to deal with a similar situation with someone else that was not in proximity, that did not have a water main running into their property or this kind of thing? And so, yes, that's a valid inquiry. It, it certainly is.
Can I make a note? The next house next to us is about a mile and a half east of us. So we're the last one on the fire district. We're really the last commuted, part of the community of Seaside. You know, I, again, I, I appreciate what Dan's saying about potability. But we have had professional people come in and build this system that do this for a living. I mean, they're as responsible for anything we drink as they, as we paid for. And I was very concerned because we were on an old system that was taken out of the well, which basically the only problem was with, was iron. And you can solve that by putting salt in the system and takes it out. But nevertheless, when, when we were looking at possibly having to come out of the river again and drill another well, all those things, we went back to Hillsborough Pipe. They're the ones that do a lot of it down here. They're, they're, they have actually a route. They take care of people's water systems. And they, they basically said, look, the system we build use as good as anything you can get. So, I mean, you're right, maybe the power goes off. And, but the, but the point is, is that we're not going to, we're not going to pull water out of your system unless we turn the valve on. It's not going to be continuous. So we have a lot of control with what's happening, too. And, you know, I, I guess the point is, is that, you know, like I said before, if, if you, if we don't, if we're, if we can't take it out of your place, we're still going to get water from you. We just have to. We, there's, the other problem is, I wouldn't even be here if there was anybody in this community to deliver water. There is none. Not one. You go to Tillamook, they got a company down there to deliver three thousand gallons, up to three thousand gallons of one shot. Nobody here, not in the whole county will deliver water. And partly it's because we are in, we haven't been designated a drought community. So therefore, it's not financially feasible for somebody to really set up a tank to, to deliver it. And we'd probably be like one of five, probably. I, I've looked at the chart and I've signed in and I pretty much recognize all the names. There's about five people that really get all of the water from you guys. And, and we're probably, you know, one of the ones that come in most. But they have bigger tanks maybe. That's, but I can't deliver to my house unless it's five hundred gallons because I can't, I can't get a trailer big enough that would handle that kind of water.
Plus, we're getting close to seventy years old and that's not a fun thing to go to.
All right. This has been a very helpful discussion. I think we're down to three possible decisions that I'm going to offer to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before you get down to three decisions, the water foreman is also here. And I don't know, Mike, do you have anything that you'd like to provide? I, I think it's important to, when we're all talking about water systems and this is the guy who knows them.
Okay, good. And, and they know I've talked, and I would love to give them water. But I did get ahold of Oregon Health Authority. And finally today at four thirty, they emailed me and said, we cannot serve you guys' raw water, period. So we would have to get approval through them first. Because that's the guys that regulate us. And that's why I went to, to ask him what, he said, he had a meeting with all his regulators today and they said, there's, we can't do it. Yeah, I, and I, I feel terrible because I have stayed awake nights thinking, how am I going to get you water? And I just, I just can't do it.
Was it noted that we had our system?
I can give you his name tomorrow.
No, but I'm saying, did they make their decision based on us?
I gave him all the information I had.
But knowing that we have a new water treatment system.
He didn't, he, I told him, I said, they have, and I can give you his number and have you calling. That's, that's, like I said, I wanted to give you guys water in the worst way.
Because I know, I know even in the water district that I work for, the only thing that we did, you know, out at Youngs River, Lawson Clark, was chlorine, you know? And that's really the basic one item that you need to make water potable.
For a residual. You got UV, that's great, but you, you should have a residual, especially if you're going to sit it in a five thousand gallon tank.
But I'm saying, but.
And I'll help you with that. I, I mean, on my own time, I don't care. That's something we can do, but.
But I also want to.
I think that what the city should do is expedite getting potable water out there.
Yeah.
And everybody says it's ten years out. Maybe I should talk to some people, find out what it will cost to do it. I mean, they can bore. And if you get five different residents to, to get onto it, maybe we can do it.
We're not testing, Mike. Is there any way we could do some testing of our water and?
Yes, you can send it to the lab.
Out there all the time anyway.
Yes, the lab actually goes on on Tuesday mornings and they'll do it.
I mean, maybe just providing some testing from our own water when you're, you know, out there or we can bring it in or whatever.
Right. I, I don't test it personally, but yeah, we can send them off. I, like I said, I wanted to do everything in my power to get you water. I just, I just. Like, my regulator is the guy that I have to go with.
That's what we're up against, yeah.
But how, how do we, how do I get these quotes then from all these other water systems that are?
I was worried about that, too. And I actually know some of the people that you were, you were talking about.
And one of them was quoted by Carrie Salas, and they're the overseers of the drinking water system.
I, I never got a chance to talk to Peter. I'll, I'll call him tomorrow and see, you know, give me some references.
And I, I, you know, I think too that, you know, I don't know, are there any tax people in here? If you ever go to a tax consultant, they always give you the worst case. They always say no. Because they don't want to be responsible. And so I, I'm not sure that they know, you know, everything we can do to make the water clean. I mean, we've had to take water out of Mail Creek. And it, when it comes out, it's, it's super clean. It's.
Well, your source is basically the same water as ours.
We take it to Hillsborough Pipe, they test the water.
Especially when you guys were talking about never being fed. I think that there used to be a chlorine point at Blackbridge and there was people on it. But the safe drinking water can act, come out, that was over. Yeah, they had to pull that and it had to be, that's why the new lane goes out to Wapiti. And it is a two inch at the end of Wapiti, which is, which were, that's not all that great.
I mean, it's not part of the Wapiti because you've got a Hofseth's house.
Yes. Well, that's where the two inch ends, that house you're talking about, right?
We were actually with the understanding, just, I want to say this, we were with the understanding that there was raw water being delivered. understanding that there was raw water being delivered. All it was was chlorine. We're Ox, Ox isn't better than that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, so I, I guess one of the things, um, and, and I'm only making a suggestion, certainly the council has, has the right to make a decision if that's what you choose to do. But it, it sounds to me like at this point, maybe the best thing that the council could do would be not to take action, uh, at this time. It seems that there may be some more discussions that need to take place, certainly with, um, uh, Oregon Health Authority, uh, concerning the, uh, email that we received. I know Mike's very interested in trying to help, uh, the Pogues and, and, and from what I hear from the council, it sounds like the council's interested in doing it. It's just a matter of the practicality. We do have to protect our ability to deliver water to our 38 other, 3,800 other customers. Um, and, and that certainly has to be the, the primary concern, but we certainly would be interested in exploring every, any avenue that's available. And it sounds to me like there needs to be some more exploring done before maybe a decision is made.
There were three options that I thought that we were left with. The first one, not a good one, would be to deny your request. The second one would be to table and to seek additional information and options. And the third one would be to approve with your request with conditions. And what I'm hearing from Mark and I think I'm sensing from the council is that we want to keep trying to see if we can find out. So I'm, I'm going to ask the council to table, uh, your requests and continue to work on potential options and alternatives.
I, I'd like to add one more piece to that is whether or not, uh, the city has resources or connections to ways of being able to help them fill their 5,000 gallon tank in other methods. Yeah. And we, we don't. We, we don't have the capability to do it, but maybe somebody at Camp Rylea or somebody like that where they have big water buffaloes that could make something like that happen.
Otherwise it can be raw water.
I'm sure they.
We have to treat it anyway.
Right. I'm just, I'm just saying if there's a way that you don't have to manually do it yourself and we can solve the problem that way.
That would even be awesome. I mean, that's the first thing we did was actually look. And when, when we were told by Mark that it could be 10 years or Dale or whatever it was, uh, we thought, well, you know, maybe we just get a more 5,000 gallon tank or even a 10,000. I mean, they're not that expensive, about five grand apiece. Ugly, but they were. And we just have it delivered. But, I mean, I call, I, I mean, I, I did get, there was a guy from Tillamook that had a milk, one of those milk, which would be, they would fill it full of water and then deliver it once a month. But it was so astronomical, it was like $2,000 a month. It, it just was, you know, it just wasn't possible, so. No water, boy.
Could I ask you a question? Is it possible to negotiate a, a groundwater easement on an adjacent property with a nearby landowner?
You know, I thought about that. Our neighbor has, I think he's working off of our old water line, you know? I, I think ours was destroyed because of the, of the state's handiwork. Uh, but nevertheless, uh, we thought about that, but then there was a drought. If there wouldn't have been a drought, I would have first thing gone over there and asked him if I could do that. But the problem is if there's a drought and we start to take water out of his system, do you see what I'm saying? Then we'd be in trouble. And I, I'm not sure he would do it anyway because then we still have to go through state.
He's still across the creek from us too.
So we'd still have to get all the permits from state division of ads and, you know, fish and wildlife and, and all of that. We're, it just hasn't been easy. We've been working with them for almost two months and.
I know most everybody at Water Resources is by name now.
Yeah. Yeah, we know. You want to know about water? Call us. We, we can be consultants. We just don't have any.
Well, thank you, Brian and Peggy. We feel your pain. We want to try to help you find a solution and we'll continue to work.
Thank you so much for considering, you guys.
Thanks for your good work and the good.
Do you want me to give that stuff to you down the list?
Yeah, you can say whatever you want to say to me, Peggy. I'll be glad to look at it.
Thanks again, you guys.
Okay, good. Moving on, we have a request, a water meter installation outside of the city of Seaside Limits, vacant land located east of Evergreen Cemetery. Uh, somebody that we know pretty well, David Rankin is here. David, you want to come up and talk to us a little bit about your plans there?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before, uh, Mr. Rankin begins to speak, I think it's important that, uh, for the audience to know that in the case of the Pogues, uh, we do not have water, water out or finished water out to their property.
Yeah.
In the case of Mr. Rankin, um, we have a pipe that runs right in front of his property. So it's a little bit different.
Definitely different, yeah, yeah. So you're planning to build there?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. My wife and I purchased the property. We're going through all the conditional use permit, uh, stuff with, uh, the county right now, working with Department of Forestry for some, uh, issues. And, uh, basically the, the, what we found out was the four inch, uh, line stops at our property line. Um, so we are requesting to be able to either meter there or, or, uh, put in pipe at our own expense and then meter in front of our driveway.
Good. Mike, you have any comments on that?
Well, my comment is we would, we'd dug that up and it is four inch.
Wait, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
We did dig that up at four inch where the two meters are at now and, and my recommendation would, if he said you were going to bore to your driveway, if the city paid the difference to make that a four inch to his driveway, just pay the difference between the four to two inch pipe. Then we could, then we could water the cemetery or we'd have water out that far.
Oh, good.
I mean, that's just a suggestion, but I, I don't have any recommendations. I think it's fine.
Well, I, I think that's really between you and, uh, and Mr. Win Stanley, uh, what, what we need to do is to approve your request to have the water extended there and metered. Uh, you understand that you pay an out of, uh, city limits rate, which is more.
Which is more, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Double.
So, um, any other questions for David?
Is the property really east of the cemetery or is it northwest?
Looks like.
It's actually south and then it's north and a little bit east, I guess. So, yeah, I saw that today too.
Oh, it looks north. It looks northwest.
Guess that doesn't matter.
Good, well, these are really pretty routine. Uh, if the service is there, uh, we're glad to continue to extend it. So I'll enter.
Is it the property is east of the, of the meter right now?
Yeah, right, okay.
I would recommend then we go with Dale's, uh, recommendation here and approve that request.
I'll second that.
Moving and seconded. Um, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. We have the proposal, proposal coming from the fire department and the chief regarding apparatus, an offer on one of our older apparatus, Apparate I.
I'll switch seats. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, Mr. Mayor and Council, so we've, uh, had an offer on one of our reserve apparatus, 3121, which is our Pierce 2010, uh, for 200,000 from Brinley Mountain Fire Apparatus.
I can't hear you very well, Joy.
Sorry, I've been under the weather, so.
Keep the mask on.
There we go. Missed my first three days ever in a row last week, so. The city of Seaside, Seaside Fire and Rescue has received an offer to purchase our 2010 Pierce pumper for $200,000 from Brinley Mountain Fire Apparatus LLC. This pumper currently is our second one out. The sale of this 2010 pumper would be contingent on the purchase of a new demo stock Rosenbauer Timber Wolf Urban Interface Pumper, which is available through Sourcewell Contract, which the city of Seaside is already a member. Funding through, for the new pumper would come from the sale of the 2010 pumper with the rest of the funding obtained through, uh, internal funds after talking to the city manager. The current price for the apparatus, which we just received Friday, and again, I apologize for some of you guys, I was real sick last week, so, uh, Division Chief Rankin was trying to help me out as I was home. So, but it came in at 466,441 dollars for that. There'll probably be, there's going to be some travel expenses in there and I know he noted that for us, up to, for the two trips back with the crew of up to $10,000. The reason we would, is we think this is a, a good offer for the city of Seaside is we've had, uh, some issues with this apparatus over the last, course of the last 10 to 11 years of operation. And we have strong concerns within the department personnel, as, uh, I've emailed you, all the council, of actually feeling very safe with this apparatus because it's unfortunately failed under some fire, um, structure fires we've had and not operating. Uh, every time we do have a maintenance issue, we address it right away, fix it, but after you have three or four of them, um, you really start feeling that the, the vehicle may not perform and it just doesn't get used as much that way. We just recently failed its pump test and then Councilman President Wright asked me, does it meet their standard of taking? Yes, we fixed that again, uh, recently and had it fixed and it's operational again. But, uh, so we think at this point, um, the $200,000 is a very good investment towards a new demo stock unit.
High tech here for me.
Oh, oh, we broke it.
Not the red button.
So it's Rosenbauer Timber Wolf, a couple of features it, it does offer and we're looking at this. And again, they call it a demo stock because it's a commercial chassis. It is four wheel drive and, uh, we do have issues unfortunately, probably with climate change, Mr. Horning might tell me about, Councilman Horning. But of going in the south end of town, we've had water over it even after the fixes and our engines don't go through it. We have to get, uh, uh, mutual aid to come and cover our district and our south end of town. So we thought, well, four wheel drive in a, uh, is definitely beneficial. It'll also help in our urban interface side, um, where we have woods and unfortunately we're starting to see some of the fires hit Oregon a lot worse. Knock on wood, one of our counties probably a lot, the last county that's been, not been hit by these, um, horrible fires. But to have an apparatus that can go out into the urban interface in the woods and fight both. So those are just pictures of what it may look like. And it would also work on our beach. And we had a few fires this summer on the beach, which we're also trying to fix with our brush truck this year, uh, but this would also work down there. It does look big and everybody thinks it might get stuck, but if you've ever seen some of these big, what they call three ones, engines, they, they do operate on the beach, so. And that's.
And we did test drive it on our beach.
Oh, yeah, thank you. We did test drive one about a year and a half ago. They brought one through and we did take it down the beach and made it all the way to the, the north end by the estuary and turned it around and came back off before. But, and it operated just fine. So that's why when this came up, we're like, remember that rig we drove? So we are very familiar with the vendor. Um, it's the same one we bought the tiller through. So we worked with the gentleman for two years. So he's actually here, Jonathan's out in the audience if you guys have any questions that I can't answer.
Great. We've been aware of this possibility for some time. It may be possible that some of the council have questions that they would direct to you or Mark or David, uh, anyone?
I have a question about the pumps, because you said you had a, a pump fail, but on, on the truck that you want to sell, but then they, they are requesting a certificate that says the pumps work.
Right, so we've had it fail and fixed it. So it's, it's fixed. There's never anything we, just currently it's working. Like I said, it's, it's usually when they need it, it fails on it and then the next time we go get it fixed. So there's nothing we don't ever fix right away. I think I, that, and, uh, Division Chief Rankin will let you know that I think we're both mechanics by now, should be certified, but they get fixed right away, either by, or we bring somebody in right away to fix these. It's again, we've got it up and running and working, just don't know how long.
This last time approximately, what did it cost to fix?
I haven't got the bill yet. I don't know. I imagine it's going to be two or 3,000 at least. It just, so for us to understand, we have to have pumps that pass what they call vacuum tests, which is pulling water out. Uh, this apparatus, we've had lots of problems with that. We just had it fixed again. I think it was two ball valves that were leaking, so, uh, that they found and after they tore the truck apart. So, again, it's just, it's a constant history of the last 10 or 11 years of issues. And if it was a light that didn't work, sure, and whatever, we can fix that ourselves. But when we have pump failures and firefighters concerned about whether it's going to work when they're using it, that does, and, uh, bring things to me. So when I kicked this out to our personnel, I was actually surprised and you guys got the same email I got. I didn't doctor it up or anything from each person. They gave you the concerns and after reading them myself, it was really concerning of some of these issues.
That was the biggest thing that I thought was all your personnel. I, I don't know if you just asked the ones that had a problem or just kind of across the board, but it was, you know, a hundred percent, we can't trust this piece of machinery. And that's why I asked, you know, can you get it certified? That's fine. But the bigger issue to me is if you out there and, you know, you're, you're giving your time and your energy and all this to, to fight fires, a piece of equipment you just don't trust, that's, that's good enough for me. And then, you know, Mark can figure out money. He's good at that.
Well, uh, counselor, I, I, since you brought up money, uh, I, I will jump in here a little bit. You know, uh, the trade-in on this truck is really, uh, that's, that's really what sold me in, in this game. The fact that, that we're going to get the trade-in value that we are on this truck, I have never seen, I mean, I'm, I'm in my 36th year for, working for the city of Seaside, uh, and I have never seen trade-in value, uh, on a truck that we're getting on this one. And, and, uh, when the chief came to me and said that, that we're looking at getting $200,000 for a used fire truck, we literally have given away fire trucks, uh, because, because we couldn't get anything for them. Um, and, and that really, uh, kind of cements this deal for me. Um, we, in fact, at this point, we don't even need to go outside to borrow money. The fire department's going to have to, to pay back, uh, the money that, that, uh, they will borrow, but we can handle all of that internally. Uh, so we really don't even need to go out and finance this on the, uh, in the, in the outside markets at this point. We simply can go and buy this vehicle, so.
So I'm not opposed to this and I'm not arguing against it, but this truck has a history of failing and you fixed it. At what snapshot in time does that company say, yes, it meets what you, you certified in this contract so that we're not caught in a space that this gets bounced back to us while we're in the middle of another good deal?
So just to let you know, just reading it, that we just have to have a current pump test that failed or passed and it's as is. So as soon as they come and take it, it's theirs, just like we sell the rest of our apparatus. Currently we have all the paperwork for the pump testing and the maintenance and the everything that it needs.
And they're aware that it's in kind of a lemon?
Well, I mean, yes and no. I mean, that's what they do. It's an apparatus company. I'm sure that.
Yeah, they buy old fire.
Buy old fire trucks and resell them. So, uh, I'm, and they're expecting something after 11 or 12 years old, but that's on them.
Other comments or questions?
I'd move that we go ahead and authorize this, uh, purchase and, and sale.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded. You know, the comment that I will make is that right now, uh, used cars are more valuable than they've ever been. And I think that's reflected probably in the fire apparatus market as well. So that's part of what we're dealing with, so. So I think it's time to pull the trigger. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Unanimous, thank you. Thanks, guys, for the evening.
The tires are newer than, uh, seven years.
I think they are. The tires, all of our tires.
We have an RFP bid results for the maintenance of our generators at the city of Seaside facilities. Dale's not here. Dale's not here. Mark, you want to make any comments on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not a generator expert. In fact, I haven't been an expert all night on most all the subjects that we've been talking about. But we did go out to bid for maintenance on all of our generators. A lot of people don't realize that we have many, many generators. Several of them are very large generators. We have one that will run the Fire Department and City Hall. If we lose power, the Police Department has a large generator that allows the Police Department to run. And in fact, it is a instantaneous generator. They don't even know when the power goes out down there. The Convention Center has a very large generator so that they can run when the power is out. Library, the same. Public Works, the same. These are very big generators. They have to be maintained all the time. And we also have a number of smaller generators that run our pump stations for both sewer and water. So this is an important contract for us to make sure that we have those generators all maintained the way they need to be maintained. And, and so, anyway, our current contract had run out. And some of our, recently, we've, we've purchased more generators than we'd had in the past. And so we added those new generators onto this contract. And Pacific Power Group did bid on this contract, and it's a little over $16,000. And we are recommending to you that you go ahead and accept that contract.
You know, I read through the scope of work, and, because I, I had one also, and I.
Same size as the ones we have.
But in reading through the scope of work, I'm really impressed with all that they do check. And, I mean, everything down the radiator cap, the belts and hoses, and I thought this is a very, very well-written document.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid.
They'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carries. We also have a vacancy on the Planning Commission, just recently came. And we're, we're getting at a pretty serious point here with people on our planning, our commissions. And we really need to, the council needs to take a special assignment to get out and beat the bushes. And I hope the media, those of you who are going to be looking at the replay of, of the meeting tomorrow, the next day, that you'll consider coming in and signing up for one of these boards, committees, or commissions. With that, we come to the end of our agenda, and we'll turn for any comments from city staff. Chief, you want to come back up? Either place.
I do. I just, we got, we're having all sorts of fun this week. So when we started getting this project, we got also our ISO review that, which is our insurance, all your homeowner's insurance is based on this review. So most of it's the Fire Department, our training, some of it's dispatch. But I want to give kudos out to the one department that's probably taken a lot of heat lately, was the Water Department. We have to actually test 15 to 18 hydrants and make sure that they're tested properly. And we get PSIs, and they have to basically exercise our pumps, any pumps we have, reservoirs, all that, which I believe has mothered some water up the last couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So we have, we have a review coming up. It's very important for the City of Seaside and our homeowners and our business owners to make sure that we get the lowest number we can, and that's what we're shooting for. So I'm hoping Wednesday that goes smoothly. I know the Water Department notified me today. They finished their end. So it's just us at the Fire Department. We'll talk to them and deal with all of it. So just wanted to let you know, I want to thank those departments that helped us out.
Good, good, very good. Jeff, anything more you want to share?
Uh, no, Eric.
And Mike, it's good to have you with us. Any comments you want to make to the council further?
So you know what we do here, yeah. Sometimes there are no answers to the challenge, and as tonight was an example. Yeah, thank you.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's great to be back. I appreciate, I want to thank the council for allowing me to spend, not only the, about three weeks I was scheduled to be off on vacation, but the extra week or so that I took off after that. Yes, my, my wife and I had the pleasure of coming down with COVID right at the very end of our vacation, and that allowed us to spend a little extra time in Italy. But as I have pointed out to a number of people, being quarantined is being quarantined. And it's not necessarily pleasant wherever you have to do it, so. But things are good, and I'm very happy to be back and, and looking forward to the different things that the council wants to pursue in the next few months.
Good, good. Thank you. Good to have you back.
Thank you.
Dan, any comments?
Nope. Second, Mark. Good to be back.
Wonderful. Judy Ann and Kim, thank you for being here tonight to back us up. Appreciate that. Counsel, David at the end, any comments?
Yeah. I have been extremely impressed with the work that you, Mayor, and Counselor Montero have done regarding the homeless situation. And we have seen continuous messaging coming from our community worried about the location at 11th and the Camicum. And at risk of sounding tone deaf, which I don't want to do because I, you know, I wish to be entirely compassionate. And in that vein, I wondered, as you guys come to conclusions, if short-term remedies wouldn't be to be able to offer some of those RV owners a few days at Fort Stevens to be able to empty their rigs, have facilities available, take advantage of some of the facilities that are in our area for them to be able to, one, relocate to another location while we figure out what's going, what to do with that property, as well as give them the additional services really that they need to be in a living situation, which Fort Stevens is set up to do, and the state does provide and has made it clear that, you know, being homeless is not, is not a crime, and that those public facilities should be available to those people.
Interesting point. Tida, I think you heard that, yeah?
I did.
Yeah, good. Thank you. David, anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Brian and Tom, we're going to hear you tomorrow night.
Oh, well, there's nothing more to add in that case. I'm looking forward to seeing a healthy crowd.
Good. And what time again is it tomorrow night?
7:00 PM.